From seventeen twenty-one, which comprises our six P M. Hearing, so I'll turn it over to the City Council Vice President Gail Feckley and the Chairman of Legal Affairs, John Dombrowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a public hearing this evening on seventeen twenty-one, Stephen Fratocelli of Fratocelli Oil Company, Inc., and I will turn it over to the Chairperson for Legal Affairs.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Vice President. This is Petition seventeen dash twenty-one, the public hearing scheduled for six o'clock P M. Tonight. Stephen Fratocelli of Fratocelli Oil Company, Inc., request to amend flammable liquids license from three hundred thirty-five thousand gallons to five hundred seventy-five thousand gallons of flammable liquids at two thirty-nine Litchfield Street. I just, I understand that the Fire Chief is on the line, is that correct?
That's correct, Counselor.
Good evening, Chief. I also would inquire, I know that Mr. Fratocelli and his lawyer are on the line and his engineer, I'd also inquire if Mike Nicolaro has been, is on the line?
I don't believe he is, Counselor Dombrowski.
Okay. I'll send him a quick text. He told me that he would join us.
Frank, is it you on the line right now, who just joined us? We do have one unidentified caller on the line. I'm just not sure if it's Counselor Arndinger or Mr. Nicolaro.
All right, I'm gonna just send him a quick text here. Okay, in any event, we've got some, I had circulated proposed conditions. I received a couple of conditions from Counselor Cormier. These conditions have been generated throughout the various public meetings we've had. My understanding is that Attorney Riley has reviewed all of these conditions and has approved them. My understanding also, Chief, is you've reviewed all the conditions as well?
That's correct, and approved them.
Okay, and I believe that Mr. Nicolaro has joined us. Mike, are you on the line? Mike? I seem to be having some technical difficulties with him. He's indicated to me he's, I will give him a few minutes. You know, I'll first go to Legal Affairs. Well, actually, before I'll do that, I know the Chief had put forward a thought, and I'll read, I'll read that to you. This is an email that the Chief sent to the city clerk this afternoon. Indicates Caitlin, I have reviewed and approved additional requirement that Counselor Dombrowski may wish to consider. Tanker deliveries. The delivery tanker trucks, and then in parentheses, eighteen wheeler trailer trucks, only access the property from Central Street, Route twelve to Litchfield Street to the property. This would eliminate the railroad tracks and the narrow turning radius of Lancaster Street and Elm Hill Avenue. Chief, do you want to elaborate on that further?
I, yeah, I just thought that Route twelve is a state highway, and obviously during inclement weather and stuff, it's always kept pretty good. It's usually built to a better width. Route twelve in Litchfield Street is controlled by traffic light, so it cuts down on, you know, accidents. And they both, both come off of I-190, Route twelve and one seventeen, roughly the same, same distance, so it's really not asking the delivery to go way out of its way. I just thought of a lot of the council's concerns about accidents in the area and, and, you know, incidents or accidents with the propane was, if you eliminate the railroad tracks, that, that downward slope and turn down near the ravine on Litchfield Street where the brook goes under, and then obviously Lancaster at Elm Hill Avenue is tough sometimes to pull out or pull in. So I just thought that if it was a safer way coming in, it might still make everybody a little more comfortable with the decision.
Okay, I certainly think it makes, it makes a lot of sense. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure we can make that a condition, although, although we certainly, you know, can, can request that, Mr. Fratocelli, request that of the delivery people. I'll first go to Legal Affairs, Counselor Shalifho Zephyr, your thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, I'm, what Counselor?
On what the Chief Sidlow had just expressed.
No, I understand his concerns because Elm Hill Avenue is, it's narrow. It does have the railroad tracks, so I think, you know, his concerns, I think, are well-founded, especially with big tanker trucks trying to maneuver, you know, around some of those corners. So if there was a way to, you know, I don't know if we can make it part of the conditions, that might be a question for the Police Department, I guess. But I understand the Chief's concerns, and I certainly support encouraging people to use Route twelve and that access.
And I'll go to the third member, Counselor Cormier.
To Mr. Chairman, actually, I had this discussion with the Chief a couple of weeks ago, was one of the things that he had mentioned to me, and, you know, I, I certainly agree, you know, with, you know, that, that it is, probably is a lot, you know, safer to have them both that way. But, you know, one of the, one of the reasons why I ask for this to be a condition, because I, one of my concerns is, first of all, like you said, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we can, this can be a condition. I don't even know if we can, we can mandate that. The other, the other problem that I have here is, even though that intersection at Central and, and Litchfield, I think is a lot safer because of the traffic light than it is going out the other way, you know, you look at our zoning, and we would be mandating this kind of traffic to use, you know, what is, what is a residential zone, instead of going out the other way, which is all zoned industrial. So, you know, it, it's like we're, you know, we're, we're asking, you know, for what's being used for industrial purposes to, you know, we're mandating them to go through a residential, what is a residential neighborhood according to our zoning. So, you know, I, I don't know if we can do that, you know? But I certainly definitely can appreciate and respect where he's coming from, because I think he's right. But when you look at our zoning, I don't know, I really, I question whether we can even do that, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think we, I don't think we can make it a condition, but I, I think we can, you know, certainly ask Mr. Fratocelli if he would ask or recommend to his drivers to do that. Attorney Foley, I don't know if you'd want to weigh in on this?
Um, yeah, well, you know, it being a condition of the license, I don't think that it works that, that well, because I don't know how my client could be held responsible for the actions of a third party, you know, and especially because each of these commercial drivers, they have to make their own judgment about how they're best going to access the facility themselves. But just, it's, you know, it's obviously something I think that, that Steve could recommend, but I don't think that it's something that could be per se a condition of the, of the license.
Okay. I appreciate that. I believe Mr. Nicolaro has joined us?
Yes, I am on.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike, for calling in. I asked that Mike call in, my understanding is that the Chief is comfortable working with Mike, but I didn't know if any counselors had any last questions about any of the plans so far submitted by Mr. Fratocelli's engineers, or just, you know, propane in general, or this particular project in general, if they had any questions that they wanted to direct to Mr. Nicolaro or to the applicant's engineer. I'll start with Counselor, I'll start with Legal Affairs, then I'll move to the General Counselor. Counselor Shalifho Zephyr, any, any questions at this point, or are you, you know, pretty much satiated?
No, I, the only question that I have in this, I don't know that this is a question for Mr. Nicolaro, but it has to do with number eight, condition number eight, and that's the amount of general liability insurance coverage?
Yeah.
I just, I'm not an insurance person, so a million dollars with an umbrella policy of four million dollars, I just wanted to know if those amounts have been recommended by an expert in this kind of liability insurance coverage for this kind of facility? I just wanted to know if that was adequate?
I, I spoke to a few, I spoke to a few people that had indicated that, and it gives you coverage of five million in total. So I, you know, that's, from what I've been told, that, that's sufficient for this type of situation. I know the applicants agreed to it. I think Mr. Nicolaro had opined that that was sufficient as well in his experience. But if anybody wants to weigh in on that, that's fine. Mike, I don't know if you have any comments on that?
No, it's, it's something typical that I've seen with, with other entities. So I, I think it's a fair, and I think it's, it's a, a good insurance that the town could have.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, and I'd also note Brian Riley has read all these conditions as well. Counselor Cormier, any questions for anybody?
No, Mr. Chairman, I am good for the moment, thank you.
Okay, great. I'll open it up to the, to the council. Do any counselors have any, I'm sorry? Okay, I'll, I'll open it up to the council. Does any, any counselors have any questions or comments, or anything they like or don't like about where we are at this point?
Counselor Angelini?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Counselor Angelini.
Mr. Chairman, before I proceed, could I impose on you to ask you to read into the record the conditions for anyone's benefit that may be on the line listening?
Yeah, that's, that's, I'll do that now.
Thank you. And then I have a question from Mr. Nicolaro following that. Thank you.
Okay, so these are proposed conditions for, for approval. Number one, the design, installation, and intended operation of the facility must conform in all respects to the requirements contained in N F P A fifty-eight, liquefied petroleum code, N F P A one fire code, most recent edition, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts fire code five twenty-seven C M R one oh, most recent edition, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts fire code, I think that's a typo, but, but essentially the most recent edition of five twenty-seven C M R one oh. Number two, prior to commencing any work, the petitioner must submit engineered plans, which comply with paragraph one, and must obtain all necessary and required federal, state, and local approvals and permits. Number three, the final design shall be reviewed by Michael Nicolaro, Principal Engineer and Senior Vice President of Sanborn Head and Associates, Inc., or such other independent consultant approved by the Fire Chief at the time of submission to the Building Department and the Fire Department for approval. If approved, the independent consultant will inspect the installation upon completion, but prior to final certification by the Building Department and Fire Department. The independent consultant shall also inspect the project from time to time as requested by the Fire Department. The cost and expenses of the independent consultant shall be paid by the petitioner, with an estimate provided by the consultant upon the petitioner's request. The next condition, petitioner must file on an annual basis certificates of independent testing of the relevant valves and inspection of the facility by the independent consultant with the Fire Department, which results must be approved by the Fire Department. Number, number five, all employees dealing with flammable liquids must be C E T P trained and certified. Copies of these certificates must be filed with the Fire Department. This requirement shall include any requirements for renewal certification, updated training, and continuing education required by the issuing and governing authorities. The next condition, any suspected accidents, leaks, blasts, explosions, or fires must be immediately reported to the Fire Department and Police Department. Next condition, petitioner must construct and install an L-shaped urban berm in between the area where the tanks will be located in the public streets. The design dimensions, size, and specifications of this berm shall be approved by the independent consultant. The next condition, petitioner shall procure general liability insurance in the amount of at least one million dollars with an umbrella policy of four million, and shall provide proof of such insurance to the Fire Department at the beginning of each year. The next condition, any failure to abide by these conditions may result in a suspension or revocation of this flammable liquids license. And then there were two additional ones that Mr. Cormier had presented. I don't know, Pete, Counselor Angelini, do you have those two in front of you? Uh, no, I do not.
Counselor Dombrowski, this is Counselor Shalifho Zephyr. I have them in front of me.
Oh, do you mind reading those into the record, please?
Sure. Number ten, no vehicle will be parked on the property with more than one hundred gallons of propane on it during overnight hours. Number eleven, deliveries to the facility to fill the underground storage tanks will not take place between the hours of seven P M. and seven A M. There will also be no such deliveries between the hours of seven P M. on any given Friday and the hours of seven A M. on any given Monday.
Okay, so those are the, those are the conditions that the Legal Affairs Committee has come up with thus far. Mr. Angelini, so you're, you're good to go with any question you have?
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Nicolaro, good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hey, thanks.
At our last meeting, you were kind enough to opine on some of the redundant safety features. I think one that you mentioned was venting of some of the gas in the event that those tanks would heat up. Could you expand a little bit and, and share with myself and members of the council some of the other redundant safety features that would kick in in the event of unseen circumstances?
You know, one in particular, when, when, when trucks are, you know, coming in to offload the liquid, there's, there's usually a hose, and, and there's usually an emergency shutdown that would automatically enact if that hose were to be severed, or if there was any kind of leakage. That, that is, that's kind of one area that, that's somewhat vulnerable and prone when, when you think of trucks and you think about them in the, in the vicinity of something that, that is not really a solid metal thing. It's a hose, it's a connection. There's certainly, there's, there's gas detection systems, so if there was a leak of some sort, that's another way of knowing if, if you've got an issue. That would be something that would alert the folks at the, at the facility that they have an issue, and they should, you know, they should tend to it. You know, there'll, there'll be other, other things such as, which are more passive, such as separation distances from potential that we consider to be ignition sources and flammable releases. We want to make sure that, that those have the safe separation distances, and you have enough clearance so that, so if there was a leak, we don't have something that would automatically ignite as a result of there being an ignition source. Now, those are a few things. There are other, other measures and other things, such as valves that would automatically shut down in the event that if you did have some type of failure of a, of a, of a valve or a pipe. So those are things that are built into fifty-eight and also into N F P A one.
Okay. Thank you so much. I know that you had mentioned as well how important it is for the review, the peer review consultant, and the engineers to work at the Fire Department pre and post-construction. I think we mentioned a tabletop, something to that nature. I'm paraphrasing. But could you just briefly give us an overview of, of, of what typical discussions you would have with, with the Fire Chief and his folks during one of those sit downs?
Yeah, yeah, we call them tabletop exercises, and I'm sure the Chief is already familiar with things like that. And I just, just, I'm from a company called Avant Grid, which is out in Connecticut, and we were talking about this very thing. And it's, it's having a good relationship with the, with the emergency response folks. So first of all, if you're gonna have the Fire Department or any emergency response people to come to respond to a site, they have to have familiarity. You just don't want them walking into a site and to figure out, you know, where things are. So the tabletop exercise is more about every year, you know, not to exceed fifteen months, that's, that's a typical code requirement in, in the utility world, where the Fire Department would come on site for a few hours or maybe a day and talk through, you know, every piece of equipment that's in the facility, and, and the likelihood of there to be an event, and how that Fire Department would deploy their resources to mitigate the effects of such an incident. So it could be a hose filled from a, it could be a relief valve that's blowing, it could be a, a tank that may have ruptured for whatever reason, which, which is highly unlikely, but nonetheless, you want to know what you do in order to prevent that liquid from, from finding a place where it's gonna go into a low-lying surface, because propane, obviously, is heavier than air. It's not gonna go up, it's gonna go down. So, so we would go through all those types of things with, with the, with the Fire Department, and make sure that they've got the right equipment and the right training, which I'm sure they do, but it's just applying that training to that event. So that happens maybe once a year.
All right, that's very helpful as well. I, I, I do think that it'd be extremely productive with Mr. Nicolaro and Chief Sidlow working together in tandem, along with Mr. Karen in Fire Prevention, during the, the review of the construction plans during construction and post-construction, obviously. And I guess my final question, Mr. Nicolaro, I just, and again, you've been extremely helpful. I said from the beginning, I was looking for some assurances, and, and you certainly have done a fine job of helping me meet that objective. My last question is simply this. Would, would, would this facility, when it's built out, would, would you hesitate from having a family member move into the neighborhood?
No, and that, the condition that I would place on that is that, and it's one of your conditions, which I think is a great one, although it just doesn't sound like it's, it's all that good, but having trained people. It's, it's the human intervention that usually creates the issue. And having trained people, and from what I can gather from Mr. Fratelli and the way he has conducted his business with the oil practice, I, I think, I feel confident that he would, he would put these people, and continue to keep them trained and keep them, you know, in the know and, and in good contact with fire prevention. That, to me, is so important. I'm in the business of the natural gas industry. I'm a fossil fuel guy, and we get killed. We, you know, we're right now, we're, we're taking a thrashing, and, and so the only way we can, we can pretty much promote natural gas is to keep it safe and keep it out of the newspapers. So me personally, I, I, you know, if it's low-key and nothing happens, I'm good. And, and that's, I'm hoping that will happen here, that, that you'll have trained people, and, and they will follow all the practices that are out there, and there'll be no event. And I think that you probably want to have vocational schools and people to come out there and say, hey, you know, you might not want to go to college, but you might want to work in the propane industry.
Okay, well, and my final, my final words will be a statement rather than a question, but I think you'll find that the Chief and Chief Sidlow and his folks are consummate professionals. They provide, obviously, a vital service to the community, and, and they do a darn good job. I can tell from my brief interaction with you over the last couple of meetings that you are a consummate profession as well, and I, I have faith that you will do your job for us admirably, because as you're aware, once the, the City Council issues this license, then it's gonna fall upon those folks like yourself and, and the Fire Department to ensure that everything is built to spec the code and that the facility is run safely. So again, I thank you very much for your time this evening, Mr. Nicolaro, and I think you'll find working with Chief Sidlow will be a rewarding experience. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other- Okay, thank you, Counselor. Uh, any other counselors have any, any questions or, or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Counsel Fekley?
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, who is that?
I'll, I'll yield, I'll yield to Counsel Fekley.
Okay, I'll get right back to you, Counsel Frida. Uh, Counsel Fekley, go ahead.
Thank you, Counsel Frida, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, my question is regarding number 10 of the proposed conditions for approval, and I guess this would be for Mr. Fratelli, if he is on the line?
Yes.
Okay. So number 10 is no vehicle will be parked on the property with more than 100 gallons of propane on it during overnight hours. So one of our concerns was the number of trucks, um, and how much propane would be on those trucks and how it was gonna increase the volume of propane on the property. So my question is, how is that going to be monitored? That no vehicle will have more than 100 gallons of propane on it during overnight hours?
So whatever's in the truck, when the driver returns, if it's more than 100, we'll just pump it back into the plant.
Okay, so that, that doesn't answer my question, though. Who's monitoring that? Who's gonna be checking to see and, uh, if you can go through the process of how you check to see how much, uh, how much propane is on an individual truck as it returns for the evening?
Through our dispatching software, we're able to see how much product is left on all of our trucks, uh, between myself-
Software?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, between myself and my dispatchers and my managers, we'll, we'll be monitoring that. And if there's m- more than 100 gallons left on a truck, we'll pump it back into the plant.
Okay, so as each truck comes in, you monitor it via a software program?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counsel Fekley. You're welcome. Counsel Frida, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm gonna assume, and no disrespect, but I'm gonna assume that Mr. Nicoloro is being, is representing Frat- Mr. Fratelli tonight, because I don't think we're paying him. Uh, I would think he's on that side of the fence until he becomes, uh, a consultant with the chief. Uh, but, um, just a couple of things on the conditions. I think, I think a number of these conditions are automatic. I mean, you're never gonna, they wouldn't get to step through without an engineered plan. So I think that, that's for us to say that's part of a license, um, process. I just think it's, um, it's, uh, again, not our purview, but, um, a number of these, I think, is in the same, same category. Um, the number eight's a million dollars and the four million, um, we're not quite sure, uh, how we arrived at that number, but, um, if Mr. Fratelli could tell us what he has, um, insurance-wise now, or, or what would that $5 million cover if something were to happen?
So I already have that insurance limit currently. That, that's what I already have in my policy. That's what we've had for multiple years. Um, and I spoke to my agent. He said those, those limits were more than adequate for what I was doing.
Okay, all right. Um, a- another question is, um, one, one vehicle with 100 gallons, how many gallons does the vehicle, does the truck hold?
So it's a 3,400 gallon tank total. Um, propane tanks cannot be filled to more than 80%. So 80% of 3,400 is roughly 2,800 gallons of liquid propane. So that, that's what the truck will hold at its maximum.
That's how it'd be if it was full, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And it is your, your normal deliveries right now? Are they, are they seven to seven? Are your oil delivery trucks?
Um, well, we offer 24-hour service. Obviously, we're an emergency company. We're supplying heat to people. Um, I actually did have a question about condition number 11. Um, you know, we don't, I, I, I'm not quite sure what the reasoning is as, as of restricting tankers or trucks, um, to operate after 7:00 PM. Um, we have to be able to respond to a no heat call. Um, not, not allowing us to be able to perform our work after 7:00 PM would be equivalent to telling National Grid not to respond to a power outage after 7:00 PM. Um, so I think, I think I'm just looking for some kind of explanation after that and see if there's any leeway with number 11.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna think that the, and I could be wrong, but I'm just gonna think that this is meant for delivery trucks to the site, not from your delivery trucks to the homes. I could be wrong, but I, I, that's how I'm interpreting that. Um, which still gets to the same thing. If you don't have the, uh, propane to distribute and it's, it's necessary. Um, you know, I, I don't think we can be forcing the customer to have to call another company because you can't go out and service somebody. Um...
Well, e- especially with propane, they don't have the option of going to another supplier because we own the, we own the tank for the customer. So I, I have to go out and do it. They don't have the option of calling.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I offer some clarity?
Sure.
Uh, I will, let, hold on. Let me, let me have, uh, Counsel Frida finish her questions and, and I'll get back to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, and the, the other one, I, I didn't, we didn't get anything regarding the, um, using Route 12 to Bolisfield, but if anybody remembers, we've had, we've had major discussions regarding Woolwood Street and trying to prevent going one way to the other. And, um, these are state highways and these are accepted streets, and I think restraint is pretty much impossible. So I don't know that that can possibly be done. Um, the other, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, I would like, um, you read into the record if it's, uh, acceptable to you. Uh, the comments from Joe Quinn, who is our, our Inspector of Weights and Measures, who sent us, uh, um, his opinion, even though we didn't ask for it. He felt it was important for him to weigh in. If, uh, it's acceptable to you, I'd like to read it.
All right, absolutely. Go ahead.
All right. Dear City Councilors, I followed your deliberations closely on this Fratelli Oil propane storage license request, because this project may ultimately impact the Weights and Measures Department. You have demonstrated that you are carefully and methodically assessing this request. Like area competitors, Frido Energy and Lloyd's Oil, Fratelli Oil is continuing a normal expansion into a diversified energy company. So I was not asked to provide input. I'm writing to you to provide pertinent statistical information to consider. Lamensa has approximately 20 propane exchange locations at various local retailers. These secured storage lockers, which hold numerous 20-pound propane vessels, are outside in all types of weather, closer in close proximity to buildings, vehicles, roadways, and pedestrians. Lamensa currently has 19-gallon gasoline stations, operating with in-ground storage of 10,000 to 30,000 gallons of 93 or 87 octane gasoline and diesel fuel. These large underground tanks are located close to buildings, vehicles, roadways, consumers, and also many homes in a few areas of the city. Gasoline is significantly more flammable than this propane. Lamensa has seven 1,000-gallon retail propane locations, where trained merchants fill to 20 pounds for larger propane tanks. These propane tanks are fenced in but are in close proximity, proximity to buildings, vehicles, roadways, pedestrians, and consumers. Lamensa has ample above-ground storage of heating oil, diesel fuel, and kerosene at Fratelli Oil Company and at Lamensa Ice and Oil Company. These companies control access to these storage facilities, but only train delivery operators, service personnel, or regulatory officials. As the fire chief has mentioned, there are numerous propane delivery trucks owned by companies outside the city that are in all areas of the city delivering to businesses and homes on a daily basis, which I periodically monitor. I hope that this information demonstrates how normal ha- normal having propane in the city is and that there is already underground storage of petroleum products with greater risk being successfully mitigated. Hopefully, this helps you in the decision-making process. Contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Joe Quinn, Inspector of Weights and Measures, City of Lamensa. Um, I just thought it was important to point out some of the, some of the, um, uh, points that he made. I think if you look at, at Paul Tagway, and you see that propane tank that's basically sitting on the sidewalk, and he's got trucks all around it that are, that are, uh, coming and going all the time with just a, a small fence. And if anybody knows how many accidents are on Route 12 and how potential that is for, for, uh, an accident waiting to happen, uh, I just think we have to call it, are we gonna, are we gonna regulate that maybe or change something, um, on those when they come up for renewed permits or licenses? But I think maybe if we do it for one, we ought to do it for all. Um, I understand that this is something new that we can wrap our head around, but I, I think that in fairness, if, if you do it for one, um, I think they need to be done for all of them. And if you, if you, the ultimate result is to make the city safer, then I think it's gotta be all of these or, or none at all. I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll state what I said before. I mean, I, I, it seems like there's, uh, an indication almost sometime when we talk about trained, uh, trained people that Fratelli will have. I think he said more than once that all these people are trained. Um, I, I, I think we need to, to, uh, appreciate the fact that it's, it, again, it's an 84-year business. It's never had a problem, and they're not new to the business coming into the city looking to open something up. It, it, they've been here and they're well-respected and, um, you know, I, I'm supportive. I, I'm not crazy about all the conditions, but if Mr. Fratelli's okay with them, I, I'll support them. But I, I would like Joe Quinn's letter entered into the record, uh, just so that that information is available. Um, for now, I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Frida, and thank you for reading, uh, Mr. Quinn's comments into the record. Um, I, I do believe that, uh, Mr. Fratelli brought up some, uh, uh, very good points on, um, the nature of his business in emergencies. Uh, Counsel Cormier, you wanted to, um, uh, you wanted to comment on that as well, I believe?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, you know, the, the restriction is only for deliveries in terms of a large, you know, 18-wheeler truck coming in, make a delivery of, you know, thousands, if not tens of thousands, gallons of product into, you know, the underground tanks and things like that. Um, and actually, this was based on, I'm sure he can elaborate on, on his, you know, uh, thought behind it as well. This was based, you know, on my conversation with the fire chief, that, you know, if, if there was any problem with offloading the product from, of that magnitude from a, a, an 18-wheeler, you know, then at least if it's happening during the day, you know, you wouldn't have to evacuate an entire neighborhood in the middle of the night. Or you have peop- during the day, there's more people up and around if something goes wrong, rather than potentially having, uh, you know, the driver of the vehicle, you know, setting up the system to send to the tank and then going in the cab at 3 o'clock in the morning and taking a nap. You know, um, this way here, if it's done during daylight hours, his thought process was it's potentially, it's potentially a lot safer. Um, and so, no one is telling, would be telling Mr. Fratelli that he can't, uh, fill up one of his trucks with however hundred, many hundreds of gallons of gas in the middle of the night while doing emergency. He certainly, this would not restrict him from doing that. We're talking about like the major deliveries from the larger vehicles. Um, you know, we would rather not see that happen in the middle of the night or on the, to have that kind of truck traffic and noise coming through the neighborhood. Unfortunately, this sits in a neighborhood. It was, um, you know, in, in the middle of an industrial park, we wouldn't even be talking about this. Well, that, that's the thought process behind it. Thank you.
All right. Well, let me, um, I, we added a sentence at the end of that condition that just simply said, this shall not, this condition shall not apply to emergency situations. Um, does that, does that cover, uh, your concerns, Mr. Fratelli?
Yes, you know, 'cause there are gonna be times when, obviously, inclement weather would slow down a driver from getting here. And I don't want to be stuck with not being able to offload a tanker if he happens to get in after 7:00 PM because there's a blizzard out or, you know, he, um, 'cause once the product is on the trailer, I own it. It's my responsibility to get it off the truck. Um, so-
Yep. No, I, I, I think those are, those points are, 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 are well taken. Um-
The other thing, I don't know if we could also allow Saturday morning delivery during winter months. We are open Saturday mornings from 8:00 to 12:00. And again, it would just be for the winter months, December, January, February.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem, um, with that, but I'll, I'll take it up in subcommittee, um, a little bit later on, okay?
Okay.
Uh, does, does any other counselor have any questions, um, or comments at this point? Okay, seeing none, I'm just gonna go to the public real quick. Uh, is there anybody from the public on the line who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Uh, second and final, the second time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? The third and final time, is there any member of the public on the line who wishes to address the city council either in favor of or against, um, this petition? Okay, uh, hearing none, I'm just gonna bring this back in the subcommittee. Uh, I'll start, I'll start with you, Counsel Cormier, since you, um, this was one of the conditions that, that, um, you had, uh, submitted. Uh, do you have a problem if the weekend 7 o'clock time is changed to 8 o'clock?
It, I'm sorry, if the weekend is changed, wha- can you rephrase?
To allow, to, to allow, uh, degrees. Um, what was it? I'm sorry, Mr. Fratelli, what was the timeline again that you were concerned about?
So, the way of reason now is after 7:00 PM on Friday, I, I can't receive any more propane until after 7:00 AM Monday morning. During, during winter months, we are open Saturday mornings from 8:00 to 12:00. So I was just wondering if it's possible to, you know, allow propane to be brought into my facility Saturday mornings from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon during winter months, December, January, and February, just so that I can meet the demand of the customers?
That sounds reasonable, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we can, um, Counsel Zephyr, uh, do you have any problem with that point?
No, I, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then, uh, uh, Counsel Cormier, what about also adding, um, a provision at the end that, of that particular condition that indicates that this shall not apply, uh, to emergency situations?
Um, well, I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem with it a- as long as it's, you know, as long as it's not abused, as long as, you know, it is not gonna be customary, you know, as a regular operating procedure to have deliveries after 7:00 at night. I mean, and I don't know, and you, I don't, when you start, you know, leaving the lane kind of, you know, open-ended, you know, it's, it's everybody's word against everybody's word. And, and, you know, this, this is something that, you know, I discussed with the fire chief, and I don't know if he wants to weigh in about his concerns, but, you know, also you're talking, you know, noise to the neighborhood potentially. And I think there's, I, and actually, you know, I, I don't, I hate to bring a lot of other places into the mix, but I think most, most gas stations, I, I think if you look at their permits in the city, that's, that's one of the things on most of their permits, though, is that we don't have deliveries at night because of noise and, you know, concerns about, you know, just not as many people up and about and around. And if something hap- know, just not as many people up and about and around, and if something happens, potentially take longer before somebody figures out that something isn't right, and, and it's too late, you know, be, once somebody figures that out.
Well, I think he, um, I think he's, he's invoking the term emergency, which, you know, and I think he talked about, uh, a blizzard as an example. I, I mean, I think we, we can all, we can all sort of sympathize with an emergency situation, but let me, um, let me ask Chief Sidlo his, his, uh, concerns with that, or, or if he's okay with that.
Uh, no, I'm good with the word emergency. The, the intent was that the deliveries, for the most part, from the, uh, eighteen-whealers are done during normal business hours, seven to seven, and, um, in that way, if there was an incident down there, most of the people would be awake. Uh, Mr. Fratasselli's, um, you know, will have people working there, that if something would've happened to the driver or something, someone could assist them or call nine-one-one. Um, so, I mean, you can't cover everything, but, you know, obviously, weather emergencies or if the truck broke down, you know, we'd rather have it, um, offloading its product and sitting, you know, on the side of the road waiting all night, so, um, I think, I think it's gotta be kind of big.
Yeah, yeah, C- Counsel Cormier, back to you, is that, does that, uh, help you?
That is, yes, Mr. Mr. Chairman, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, the other, the other, Counsel Zephyr, how are you with those changes to that particular condition?
Um, I'm fine with, uh, both of those changes. I think we all understand emergency situations, and, um, I'm fine with those during winter, and again, it's only during the winter month, so I, I, I'm fine.
Okay, well, um, at this point, uh, my, my recommendation, um, and, and I would, uh, reiterate that the, uh, the conditions have been approved by, um, Brian Riley at Cobbleman and Page. Um, they were approved by the fire chief, uh, and also, um, Mr. Fratasselli's counsel with the, uh, the changes made to, um, the condition relative to delivery, so, um, my recommendation, uh, right now would be to close the public hearing, and I would recommend that we approve, um, this petition, uh, based on those conditions that have been read into the record. Uh, Counselor Shalaf Lozefar, you, your position on that?
I agree with that.
Okay, and Counsel Cormier, how about yourself?
I also, uh...
Is that, I, I, I'm sorry, this is static.
I, I, I also agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so unless there's, um...
Before you close the hearing, could I ask one more question?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
All right, and just there is, Mr. Fratasselli, what is, what are your delivery hours on the weekend now for your, for your fuel, for the oil?
Um, we don't have any restrictions right now, but, um, right now, I don't, I don't have any, uh, transports coming in during the weekends, um...
Okay.
We don't have extreme weather yet, um, but I'm being told there could be some extreme weather coming up right after the twentieth of the month, which in that case then we'll start having oil coming in, um, you know, Saturday mornings.
Okay, so it isn't a regular practice now, anyway?
No, not like...
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Frida. All right, uh, unless there's any other, um, any other, uh, comments or questions, going once, going twice, third time, um, I, I do wanna thank, uh, the, the fire chief, uh, for all his input, um, and the petitioner, uh, all the people he brought to the table. I also, uh, especially wanna thank Mr. Nicolaro. Uh, my understanding is he's been doing all of this work, um, pro bono, um, uh, to help educate the council and to, to get us to this, uh, particular, uh, point in time. Uh, and I wanna thank my, uh, legal affairs, uh, subcommittee members for their hard work. Uh, so at this time, we're gonna recommend, we're gonna close the public hearing, and the recommendation of the legal affairs committee, uh, the unanimous recommendation is to be, is to grant this petition, um, subject to the, uh, conditions that were read into the record, including the two changes, um, to the, uh, condition relative to deliveries, uh, which we will clarify when the decision is written. Um, thank you very much, Madam Vice President.
And also, Mr. Chairman...
Yes, Counsel Frida.
Mr. Chairman, just, Joe, I just wanted to be sure Joe Quinn's comments are in there as well.
You read them, they're in there. Thank you.
Okay, I just...
Okay, uh, I'll turn it back over to you and Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the public hearing on seventeen twenty-one is closed, and I will now turn, uh, the meeting over to the Council President.
Thank you, Vice President. Feckley, um, it's six fifty-two, we have a few minutes. Why don't we see, um, we have two groups of interviews, let's see who's present and with us on the line. Counsel Feckley, why don't you see, um, who's joined us?
Okay, um, if I could, I could, uh, interview the two candidates for the Cultural Commission, Christine Lacerda...
Sounds like a good idea.
And Caitlin Montagna, if they are, uh, present on the line.
Caitlin Montana is here.
Okay, Caitlin, is Christine Lacerda present? Okay, Caitlin, why don't we go, start with you, and if Christine joins us, we can, uh, interview her at that time.
Sounds good.
Okay, Caitlin, so Caitlin, uh, we have a measure confirming your appointment to the position of Cultural Commission, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So, we've asked you to join us, um, I'll bet virtually, so that the council and the public can get to know a little bit about you, and also how you feel that you can contribute to the Cultural Commission. So, if you can give us a little bit of your background, and, uh, you know, how you came about to be interested in the Cultural Commission, and how you see that you would be a fit to, uh, to that particular group, so I will, uh, hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. Um, so, I have worked in my professional career, kind of, um, managing events, doing event production, um, and through that work, one of the organizations that I ended up working with was the Cultural Council in Revere, um, particularly on the sand sculpting festival that they have. So, I had since left that job a couple of years ago and was looking for ways to get more involved with the community, um, and remembered the good impact that they had on the community and decided where I live in Lemmonster. So, I've been here in Lemmonster about four years, um, and, and just looking to see what I can do to have an impact with the Cultural Commission, um, knowing kind of the reputation and the good work that they've done through the other cities that I've worked with. Um, so that is how I got here.
Okay, so you've done your homework on the Cultural Commission, and you, you've been paying attention to what they've been doing, and, uh, you feel as though you could jump on board and use some of your, uh, experience, um, helping them get some of their, their, uh, their aspirations, uh, come to, come true?
Absolutely, and I think, you know, I've been on the other side, I've been on the receiving end of some of their grants, and so I've kind of seen the process from that perspective first.
Okay.
It'll be interesting, um, and I look forward to working on the other side.
I think that would be very helpful, and I'm sure that that would be a great fit for them, um, especially now, you know, when we, when we come out of all of this, I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of need for, um, you know, cultural things within the community as people get out and about more, and, uh, again, with, with things like that comes the need for more money, so, so that, that sounds wonderful, Caitlin, uh, we appreciate that very, very much. Um, what I'm going to do now is just see, uh, quickly if, uh, we have any questions or comments from the, um, the other Ways and Means Committee members. Um, Counsel Frida?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Jia. Um, just, um, just to thank you for serving, I mean, I think you're a perfect candidate, somebody with enthusiasm, somebody with background, and somebody who's willing to jump in and, and make things better, so, thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Frida, and Counsel Dombrowski, any question or comment for Caitlin Montana?
Uh, no, no, I don't have any questions, I just wanna thank you also for, for, uh, volunteering and, and wish you the best.
Thank you.
Any other members of the council have any comments or questions for Ms. Montana? Okay, hearing none, Caitlin Montana, I believe that you would be a wonderful fit, just from the, that brief, brief presentation that you gave us, um, you know, said, uh, experience, um, and, and, uh, you know, interest in this particular field, and the need that the community is gonna have for, um, cultural, cultural events, um, you know, as I said, as, as we make our way out of this, uh, terrible pandemic, it'll, it'll be a breath of fresh air. So, I appreciate that you joined us this evening, and I'm glad that we didn't keep you waiting too long, and, uh, I will be pleased to make a recommendation that we confirm your appointment later on in, in the meeting when we get to that point. So, thanks again, and I wish you the best, and please let us know if we can be of any assistance in any way.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And do I, by any chance, have Ms. Lacerda? Okay, so I believe, um, Mr. President, I'm gonna hand it back over to you, I think maybe we'll wait it out, and I'm gonna do...
Well, we, 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 we have two minutes, and we're gonna have to recess anyway, so you might as well start, yep.
You want me to start? Okay, well, at least I can gather the truth, right? So, I have, uh, four candidates for, um, the Office of Emergency Management volunteer, uh, Brian Harper, do we have Brian Harper on the line? Yes? Brian Harper? Um, Joseph Kenny? Joseph Carlino? And Alex Ostroff. Madam Clerk, am I not hearing them, or did they not respond, or...
Oh, Alex Ostroff is here.
Okay.
Alex and Caitlin were the only ones who replied to me.
Alex is the only one, okay. All right, Alex, um, we only have a minute before we have to start the regular meeting, um, but what I would know you is, um, I don't know if you were on the line when I was speaking to Ms. Montana, um, I'll just give you a brief, um, idea of what we will be expecting of you once we come back from the meeting, which will just be very quick, we're just gonna start the meeting and then come right back to you. We're just gonna need, you know, a little bit of background so people get to know who you are, and, uh, you know, introduce yourself to the council and the public, and then, you know, how you feel, so you could contribute to the Office of Emergency Management, um, as a volunteer. So, we're gonna go into our regular, uh, city council meeting, which has, has to start legally at seven o'clock, and then I'm gonna come right back to you, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Bye. All right, thank you.
But... Okay, if the, uh, council would please rise and all assembled, and recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and justice for all. Okay, I'll take the, uh, roll call of the councils in attendance, starting with Counsel Frida.
Here.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Present.
Counsel Shalaf Lozefar.
Present.
Counsel Feckley.
Present.
Counsel Angelina.
Present.
Counsel Arndinger.
Present.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counsel David Cormier.
Present.
May I shall be recorded as present, all nine counselors are in attendance. Does the Chairwoman of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the regular city council meetings of December fourteenth, twenty twenty, and December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. In addition, I have a minute from a special meeting of the city council on December twenty-first, twenty twenty, and our organizational meeting of January fourth, twenty twenty-one. I find them to be in order with just two very small edits. One is on twelve twenty-one, we gave tribute to Mr. Brunel, and I would like to point out that Brunel is spelled with two L's, just for prosperity and to respect his name. Uh, the other is on January fourth, Stephen Medows, uh, Medows is spelled with one D. That is a, that is a era that has been historical, so for Mr. Medows. But other than that, I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to go into recess.
Mr. President, before we do that...
Counsel Frida, please, please proceed.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, and it's probably a typo, but, um, petition twenty-five twenty-one, twenty-six twenty-one, twenty-seven twenty-one, and twenty-eight twenty-one, uh, says that there are public hearings tonight, starting at, at six four, six thirty-five. Um, is that not, do we not have those hearings, or are we not, are they, should that not be listed here?
Madam Clerk?
Uh, that, the hearings should have, um, happened tonight, that's what we originally scheduled them for.
Okay, well, we'll, we will, uh, we'll get to those as soon as we're done with the interview. All right, so, um, thank, thank you for pointing that out, Counselor. Um, so I have a, I have a motion to go into recess, um, do I have a second?
Don't move.
Uh, Counsel Angelina, uh, all those in favor of going into recess, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in recess, uh, Counselor, uh, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, you can continue with Mr. Alex Ostroff's interview.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Alex, uh, as I indicated, uh, we just need to get a little bit of background on you, you know, what your, what you, your, a little bit about your path, um, what your experience is, and how you feel as though you can contribute to the Office of Emergency Management.
All right, so, I'm Alex, and I've been a security officer for the past two years, and before that, a lifeguard for seven years, and so, volunteer-wise, I've done numerous, like, volunteering over with Dean College during my four years there, and then I volunteer with Need, uh, Service Dog Agency, and worked with Volunteer during their annual truck pull.
So, I'm sorry, you said you work with Service Dogs?
So, I, um, volunteer with, uh, Need, the group that deals with, like, hearing and with Need Service Dogs, so I volunteer with them, and one of the events I volunteer for is their annual truck pull.
Oh, okay.
So, I have, like, a long list of, like, different volunteering, like, activities and events I've done in the past.
Okay, and what kind of, what kind of training do you have for that, for working with the Service Dogs?
So, I don't work with them directly, I, um, what I do is, like, I, I help out at, I volunteer at all their different events, they, at the events they run. So, with the truck pull, I, like, help out with the setup and then run, uh, with the, one of the employees, like, on a side event as well, so I help run the event. I help, like, with the setup, you know, yeah.
You help with the organization of the event?
Yeah.
Okay, and I can imagine that that attracts quite a few people and better times.
Oh, yeah, it's like, there's, like, all the, um, clients that have dogs, um, and then just members of the public that show up.
Okay, excellent, and what, and what brought you to want to, um, volunteer for the, uh, Office of Emergency Management?
So, in college, I took, did, uh, Associates in Criminal Justice and decided to continue and get a bachelor's degree in security management, and some of the courses I took were emergency management, response, and crisis and emergency response systems, and that just seemed interesting to me.
Yes, and it, it seems that it would, you would, it would make you a very good fit for this particular position as well.
Thank you.
So, Alex, just that little... So, Alex, just that little bit of biography is very, very interesting and I appreciate that you shared that with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, what I'm going to do is ask if, uh, Council Freedom has any questions or, um, comments for you?
Sure. Hi, Alex, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Um, but, did I understand you to say that you're in security now?
Yeah.
That, that's your job now, is a security officer?
Yes, I'm a security officer with Allied Universal Security Services over at the International Restifier Building on Crawford Street.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's, that's a pretty, pretty secure facility, to say the least, down there.
Yeah.
And, do you live in Livingston?
Yes, I live on Commonwealth Circle.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, what, what, what type of position are you looking to volunteer in in emergency management? Anything specific?
Um, the, the ENT unit.
Okay. Perfect.
Yep.
All right, it, I agree with the Chair. It sounds like you're a perfect fit for it. So, congratulations and thank you for, for supporting it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Freedom. Um, Council Dombrowski, do you have any comments or questions for Alex?
Uh, no, I don't have any, I don't have any questions for Alex. I, I know Alex, uh, I know his family. He's a, he's a great kid and, uh, he'll be a, a welcome addition to emergency management. Very happy to see his name on the agenda.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Any other councilors have questions or comments for Alex? Hey, Alex, thank you very much for joining us this evening on the phone.
Thank you.
As I said, I, I, I'm very impressed with what you've told me and I believe that emergency management will be lucky to have you and I believe that you can help them in many, many ways. Um, so, I would, I'm going to be pleased to, um, request that your, um, appointment be confirmed as we, as we, when we get into that later on, uh, in the meeting. So, thanks again and luck.
Madam Chair, I, Madam Chair, I'd just like to add, um, congra, it really shows something when he's one of four that, that stayed on the line through all our, our other business, so, that, you know, he, he's a good fit for emergency management.
I agree with that. I agree with that 100%. Thank you for pointing that out, Council Freedom.
Counselor, you're, you're presupposing that the other three were even on the line out, but I, I, I hear, I hear, I hear your take.
Yeah, yeah, I think that they did respond, but.
Yeah. Some of them have been there for the long haul. That was, that's more what I meant.
Yeah, but Alex is here, so that, that means a lot. And Alex, we, you know, we're, we, we, we're always so lucky to get people like you that are willing to volunteer, so we, we really appreciate it. Thanks again and good luck with everything.
You're welcome.
And, uh, stay safe.
Thank you.
And, um, we'll be, uh, we'll be letting you know, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Council Dombrowski.
Yes.
Chairman of Legal Affairs, uh, do you want to take up, um, 25-21, please?
Uh, yes, I can do that. I, I had noticed that, uh, what Council Freedom had brought forward, um, is, is a mistake on the agenda. Is, are we still good to go with the public hearing?
I, I believe we're good to go with the public hearings, but you may want the, um, I, I know you mentioned that you wanted to take these into committee. Um, I believe, I believe the planning, uh, coordinator or planning director is on the line, so I don't know how you want to handle it, whether you want to have these hearings tonight, whether you want to continue the hearings. Um, I'll let you weigh in on that.
Well, let me, why don't I open it for now and we'll take it there.
Sounds good.
They've all been, they've all been published, right?
They have.
Yeah, they've all been published. Uh, so, this is, uh, petition 25-21, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to home occupation. Um, and, uh, Elizabeth Wood, I just inquire if you're on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. I'm on the line.
Oh, hi, how are you?
I'm good. I've got a two-year-old running around here, but we're, we're, we're good.
Okay, hi. There was a, um, Elizabeth, there was a mistake on our agenda, so the hearing was properly, uh, published and advertised, but not.
You need to hear from him also. The agenda, I, I didn't anticipate it moving this quickly. Um, the plan was for me to give him a heads up that it was, we were coming up on the agenda so that he could participate. Do you want me to bring him in?
The, the hearing, the hearing is on right now, so.
Yeah, we're doing it.
He's either on the line or he's not. So, um, you do it. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay. All right, the, uh, let me just quickly go to my, uh, subcommittee. Uh, Council Zephyr, does it make sense to, um, move this particular hearing to February 8th when we have all the referrals in?
It does, and I think in the meantime, we had discussed having a legal, having a subcommittee meeting as well to deal specifically with these.
Right, that's right. After, yeah, after the public hearing, I was going to take it in to subcommittee.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, and Council Cormier, uh, your feelings?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, um, any other counselor want to weigh in? All right, um.
No, it makes sense.
Mr. Souza, uh, go ahead, Council Freedom.
So, I just said, oh, it makes sense time-wise to go into February.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Souza and, and, and Ms. Wood, I, I guess, um, you know, unless there's some strong objection from you, I think the counselor's preference is to move these to February 8th when we have all the referrals in and we can have one cohesive hearing. Um, is there, is there any objection from, uh, either of you on that matter?
I, I don't have any problem.
Okay, so, what I gotta, what I, what I'm going to do for each of these is I'm just going to go, uh, to the public because I have to and then we're going to, um, end the meeting and continue the public hearing to February 8th, so I'll take care of that administratively right now. Uh, with regard to, uh.
I just, Mr. Chairman, just Council Cormier, I just have one question. Would, would we be able, would we be able to have a subcommittee meeting on these after February 1st but before the 8th or no?
I, I would prefer to have the subcommittee meeting after the public hearing.
Okay, all right.
That way, we're not running afoul of any open meeting problems once, once it's closed.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
All right, so, petition 25-21, is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 25-21? Third and final time, uh, does anybody in the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 25-21? Um, hearing none, uh, Mr. President, um, at this time, uh, the request is to continue the public hearing to February 8th, 2017, I believe at 6 o'clock. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay, to, uh, 6 o'clock and we can move on to the next public hearing.
All right, let's, let's, let's take a vote and establish that right now. So, you've heard, you've heard, shouldn't we do that now?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to continue the public hearing relative to 25-21 to our February 8th meeting at 6:00 PM. Um, all those in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, so the, uh, public hearing on 25-21 has been continued to February 8th at 6 o'clock. We'll move on to the public hearing on 26-21. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Petition 26-21, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot frontage and adding a definition for paper streets. Uh, similarly to the preceding, um, petition, um, the request is going to be to continue this to February 2017. I will go to the members of the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 26-21? Hearing none, uh, Mr. President, again, the request is February 8th, 2017, um, at, uh, 6:15 PM, I guess?
Um, yeah, six, that'll work. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, Council Freedom.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President. It, um, could I just request that when we have the hearing on the 8th, do we also have the building inspector?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can request that he be present telephonically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
He did, he did send in a, um, a, a blanket, uh, recommendation for all four petitions, but it wasn't, uh, there wasn't a lot of detail in it, so, you know, it certainly makes sense to have him there.
I just think it's important as to why these are being brought forward, so.
I agree. Okay, Mr. President?
Okay, so do, your committee's okay with, um, the, uh, recommendation?
I, I believe so. I, I, I didn't ask them, but I thought I covered it in the preceding hearing.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, no objection from the other members of Legal Affairs?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, you've heard the MS recommendation of Legal Affairs to continue the public hearing on 26-21 to February 8th at 6:15. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the public hearing on 26-21 is continued to February 8th at 6:15. Moving on to 27-21, and the public hearing is scheduled this evening on that petition. I guess we're in a similar situation. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Petition 27-21, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar. Uh, similar to the preceding two petitions, um, we're going to be requesting this matter also be continued to February 8th, 2017 at 6:30 PM. Let me go to the public. Are there any members of the public on the line who wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, are there any members of the public who wish to address the council either in favor of, uh, or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 27-21? Um, hearing none, uh, Mr. President, I'll refer this matter back to you with a request from the Legal Affairs Committee to continue this to February 8th, 2017 at 6:30 PM.
You've heard the MS recommendation of Legal Affairs Committee to continue the public hearing on 27-21 to February 8th at 6:30 PM and provide further time for the petition. Any comment or questions? All those in favor of further time for the, or continuing the public hearing to six, to February 8th at 6:30, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, petition is given further time and the public hearing is continued to February 8th at 6:30 PM. Moving on to 28-21, um, same situation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. President. Petition 28-21, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance to include provision for regulating commercial kitchens. Uh, I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public on the line who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition 28-21? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 28-21? Third and final time, is there any member of the public on the line who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition 28-21? Um, seeing none, uh, again, Mr. Uh, Mr. President, the request from the Legal Affairs Committee is to continue the public hearing to February 8th, uh, 2021 at 6:45 PM.
Very well, I've heard the, the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to, to give 28-21 further time and continue the public hearing to February 8th at 6:45 PM. All those in favor of those two items, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, 28-21 is given further time. Public hearing is continued to 6:45 on February 8th. All right, now we're going to do the public forum, which we have not done yet. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on the matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there anybody signed up or is there anybody on the line that wants to address the council in the public forum? The second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? And the third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? Hearing none, I declare the public forum closed. We will now, uh, come out of recess and start with communications from the mayor, beginning with C-52.
C-52, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $360,000 be made to the school department transportation expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-52 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-52 has been given regular course. C-53?
C-53, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request to accept, uh, $2,294,867 from Phase II of the City Cares Act funding regarding COVID grant Phase II. from Phase 2 of the City Cares Act funding regarding COVID grant Phase 2.
C-53 is referred to the Chairman of Finance. I'm sorry, to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the agenda, regular course, please.
Very well, C-53 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 32-21.
32-21, Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Economic Development Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the floodplain, see attached letter, regarding amendment Article 6, Section 22-34, Special Districts Regulations Floodplain.
Very well, 32-21 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the agenda, regular course, uh, with the referral to the Planning Board, the Building Inspector, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Very well, 33-21 has been given regular course with referrals to the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Building Inspector, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the City of Lemister. Yes, Councilor Frida?
Do we have to vote on that hearing for, uh, 32-21?
Um, yeah, we should.
It's already been set.
Um, no, we should vote on that hearing, uh, you're correct. Alright, so, um, Mr. Chairman, I'll refer back to you on establishing the public hearing date on February 8th at 6:50. Council Dombrowski?
Sorry about that, I, I had hit the button by mistake. Uh, if we could establish, um, a hearing, a public hearing for that petition for February 8th, 2021, at 6:50 PM, uh, and I apologize for overlooking that.
That's quite alright. Um, you heard the, you heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to establish a public hearing on 32-21, uh, for February 8th, um, at 6:50 PM. All those in favor of establishing the public hearing as, um, suggested, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the public hearing has been established for February 8th at 6:50 PM. Now we'll move on to matters before the city council, starting with the City of Lemister financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, we started the fiscal year on July 1st, 2020, with $14,189,152.27. We have earned $24,953.71 in interest. We also got our certification of FY19's free cash, which was $7,401,64. Uh, for a total added, um, of $7,425,127.21. Uh, to date, and through and including the appropriations that are on the agenda tonight for the first time, if everything on there is approved, we will have spent $3,169,505, leaving us with a balance of $18,444,774.98, and that is the financial report.
Very well, any questions? Okay, uh, moving on to finance, starting with C-50, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C-50, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $18,600 be made to the Police Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Uh, we do have a letter here from, um, Intern Chief Aaron Kennedy, dated December 21st, 2020, um, and he's writing, uh, Dear Mayor, we formally requesting an additional appropriation of the amount of $18,600 to our Police Department Capital Account to replace boiler. We had received a rough estimate of $16,000 before which this amount represented the worst-case scenario. Upon completing the bid, we found out we are drastically low on the amount needed to replace the boiler. Once the replacement is done, the old boiler will be sent back to the manufacturer for inspection to verify if the warranty will cover any part of its failure. There is a fair chance that the city will recoup some of the replaced cost. So, I think the letter speaks for itself, you know, we, uh, we knew there was a boiler issue there, and the bids came back, and, you know, it is quite a bit higher than they anticipated. Um, but we have much of a choice, uh, but to, um, to approve C-50 and get this replaced, then hopefully we can, you know, um, get a nice return after they inspect the old, old one, and, and maybe, you know, we'll recoup some of our money, but it'd be my position, Mr. President, and I'll ask you to check, members of my committee, that we grant C-50.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini?
I agree as well.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-50, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Hardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as aye by a vote of nine to zero, C-50 is granted, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order the sum of $18,600 be appropriated to the Police Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C-51, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C-51, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $1,124,956 be made to the street resurfacing expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the Highway State Aid. This is regarding FY2021, Letter of Credit Award. Uh, we do have a letter here, um, it actually is from, um, MassDOT. We've got this, um, back in February, dated February 20, um, it, it reads, Dear Mayor Mazzarella, we are pleased to inform, we anticipate Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid Funding for Fiscal Year 2021 will total $200 million statewide pending final legislative approval. This letter certifies that pending final passage of the Bond Authorizing Agreement, Chapter 90, appropriement to Fiscal Year 2020 is $1,125,956. This apportionment will automatically be incorporated into your existing 10-year Chapter 90 contract, which will be available on the MassDOT website, list that here. The Chapter 90 program is a part of maintaining and enhancing your community's infrastructure, and is essential component of our state's partnership. We look forward to working with you in the coming year to continue the success of this program. So, I did have a, a discussion today with John Richards about this, and as of now, this is what our, this, we are looking at for our money, for FY, uh, 2021. Um, and, uh, I did get a list, uh, today of the proposed streets, although, a full disclosure, they're always subject to change, I don't know if there's any emergencies that arise between now and paving time, and I will get that to the clerk and get it sent out. Um, um, also a side note, there, there is gonna be some local money that we're gonna see in appropriation as well. The mayor has committed to, um, paying additional local money on, on some roads. He understands the, you know, that Chapter 90 funding is, is not enough, and he feels we're in a position to, and, and we should appropriate more. Uh, but for now, um, it would be my opinion, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee, that we grant C-1.
Definitely.
Um, I'll check with your committee members, starting with Pauline Cormier, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I do, I agree.
And Councilor Angelini?
I will agree as well.
Very well, you heard the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant C-51, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Hardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as aye by a vote of nine to zero, C-51 is granted, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $1,125,956 be made to the street resurfacing expense account, the same amount to be transferred to the Highway State Account, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to 30-21, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, 30-21, Greg Chapellane, Purchasing Agent, request to allow the purchasing agent to afford a contract for school busing services for a five-year period. Um, we do have a letter here from Mr. Chapellane, dated December 22nd, 2020, addressed to the Lemister City Council. Dear Honorable Members of Lemister City Council, this petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for busing, for school busing services for a five-year period. The current contract will expire at the end of this school year, June 30th, 2021, and in anticipation of this expiration, I am in the process of
Muted.
invitation to bid to secure transportation services for the next five years. Said services are to begin July 1st, 2021. For Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, uh, Section 12B, the city can only enter into service contracts for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter into a service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the city council must pass a majority approval vote to allow the extension. Said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. Issuance of a five-year busing contract has been past practice for the city since 2003, with favorable pricing seen most times. The school, business administrator, and I intend to issue a straight, i.e. no option years, five-year contract, as we believe it will garner the city the most favorable pricing. This action must be voted upon now, as I prepare to issue the new bid. As I must know what time period and contract length, I will be able to structure the bid around. I would respectfully advise that the city council vote in favor of allowing the school bus transportation contract to cover a five-year period, once again. Um, signed by Greg Chapellane and Melanie Michaels, who's the intern business manager over at the School Department. Um, obviously, we've done these in the past, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory, as I read, it, it, it saves, it can save us a lot of money by having the continuity of a longer contract. Um, so it would be my opinion that we grant C, I'm, I'm sorry, that we grant 30-21, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant 30-21, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, just real quick, we've done this for many years, and it's, uh, it's saved us money, so it's, uh, definitely a good point.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, any, any other councils want to weigh in? Okay, hearing nothing further, this will be by roll call, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Hardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as aye by a vote of 30, I mean, I'm sorry, by a vote of nine to zero, 30-21 has been granted. Moving on to 31-21, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, 31-21, Gregory C. Chapellane, Purchasing Agent, request to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for forestry management services for a 10-year period. This will be a new contract, but it is not the first time the city has hired such consultant to assist with forestry matters. Uh, we have another letter here dated December 23rd, 2020, from, um, Greg Chapellane, um, they, uh, addressed to the Lemister City Council. This petition is to allow the purchasing agent to afford a contract for forestry management services for a 10-year period. This will be a new contract, but it's not the first time the city has hired such a consultant to assist with forestry matters. For Massachusetts Journal, Chapter 33, Section 12B, the city can only enter into contract services for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter into a service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the city council must pass a majority approval to vote allow the extension. Said city council approval is granted before the contract is executed. The purpose of hiring the forestry consultant is to assist the Department of War Public Park with updating of the DPW's existing forestry management plan. A forestry management plan currently exists, but it now requires updating and further planning for the next 10-year period of, the next 10-year time period. Finalized forestry plan will be submitted to the state for approval. Order the city to undertake the forestry program plans on executing under the plan. Forestry Management Plan Formulates and Sets in Motion The Forestry Manager Plan Formulates and Sets in Motion a Management Plan for All of the City's Forested Areas. One of the main aspects of the plan is management and elimination of organic from the water sources, i.e. reservoirs. Requires a plan of active control and remove timber vegetation near and around such water sources. The removal of timber and trees requires a selective cutting program whereby the direct trees are removed and in the right areas. This type of knowledge of forestry consulting firm would specialize in. The Timber Management Plan would also extend to all of the forested areas beyond the watershed areas. The Timber Management Plan would identify trees that should be removed due to rock, poor health, invasive species, and other similar reasons. It would identify trees for removal where there is too much overgrowth, as well as removal of felled trees and nuisance undergrowth that the purpose of its threat has due for forest fires. Result, being healthier, cleaner forests, for the better sustainability of existing and future growth. So I think, you know, um, I think we get the gist, what they're proposing here, um, and, um, and I think that these longer contracts certainly do, um, benefit the city. Um, and I would ask, Mr. President, that we, um, grant 31-21.
Very well, uh, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd just like to add, if I may, uh, to the distinguished Chairman of Finance's comments that up in, uh, the water supply area of Morse and Haynes Reservoir, as I know you're aware, as a historian, the CCC program planted, must have been a sale on red pine at the time, because there's row after row after row. And that's known as a monoculture, obviously, and we want diversity in our water supply areas, and actually throughout any of the forested areas in the city. Um, so this, this, uh, forestry, uh, plan would also allow the city at some point, if they so choose, to, uh, have a timber sale, where companies would come in and bid on some of the timber that they plan on removing. So, um, in light of what the, uh, Chairman of Finance said, and Mr. Chapellane's letter, I will certainly be supporting this.
Very well, thank you, Councilor. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant 31-21, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Frida.
Um, I certainly support this, I know the, um, you know, the clearing of the forestry, uh, by the forestry and the reservoir area is vital to keeping the bacteria out. We know that was a, a major problem with the TTHM that this council was very involved in for a number of years. Um, but I do have a real issue with 10 years, that's a long time, it's not somebody that we've had before. Um, if you have an issue with them, 10 years is a long time with a contract, they have to renegotiate or, or not renegotiate if they choose not to. Um, if they're, if it were- Um, if they're, if it works, then it's, uh, it's a good partnership. It's perfect. If it doesn't, it's, it's a mess. Um, I would just ask the Finance Committee if they would reconsider to the five years. And if it works at five years, they can very easily just go for the, for the ten. Um, I, I, I just hate to see, I hate to see five years. I'd like to put in an amendment to make it five years as opposed to ten.
All right, well, um, there's a recommendation before us. I don't know if the Legal Affairs Committee has a, a stomach to uh, change their recommendation at this juncture.
Well, that was the Finance.
I'm sorry, Finance Committee.
Through, Mr. President, through the Chairman of Finance, if I may, or as versa, um, these, these type of ten-year contracts in forestry are quite common. Um, you, you really need to have a long-range forestry management plan, uh, in order to be successful. Um, I, I, I think the city had tried shorter-term, uh, contracts. I think they've identified, uh, the primary issues in the water supply and other areas, um, from former, uh, former uh, forestry consultants that, uh, were, were on retainer with the city. Um, and I would, uh, I would certainly, um, want, uh, to keep this a ten-year contract. Um, I don't know how the other, obviously, the other members of the committee feel, but that's my position.
Uh, if I, Mr. Chairman?
If I may, uh, Mr. President, it's Counselor David Cormier. Um, yeah, I, I, you know, I tend to agree. I mean, there's no question, a ten-year contract is a long time, but I, I think that this, this is the nature of this contract is very different than others, where you're putting together a, a, you know, a long-term plan for, for to manage the forest. And, and, um, I, I just, I, I, it's probably not even feasible to, to do, you know, five years, unfortunately, um, because of the nature of it. It, it, it is a long, I mean, it talks in here about a, you know, a, a longer-term plan, so, um, I understand, and, and probably, you know, for most of it, I don't, I don't, if we ever got delivered, you know, any other contracts that wanted ten years, I, I probably would be against them as well, but, you know, in terms of, of the nature of this one, I, I think I can understand, you know, why it is ten years, so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
All right, so, so the, the, the recommendation stands, um, of Legal Affairs. Um, is there any further discussion?
Yes, the, uh, Ms. Counselor.
I heard Counselor, I heard some, was that Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor, you may proceed.
Um, so in looking at the letter, um, I, I also have some concerns about a ten-year contract. And, um, I don't know why we didn't refer, we don't have anything back from DPW, um, supporting this as well. I mean, I understand the necessity in clearing the watershed and keeping it clean, keeping our water supply clean, ensuring, um, doing the best we can to prevent, you know, forest fires, and, and I think appropriate forest management is a very important part of, um, you know, the city's responsibility. But I, I do have some questions about the ten-year contract. And the letter from Mr. Chaplalane says that this is a new contract. And, uh, further down in the, um, letter, it says that the, um, a forest man, a forestry management plan currently exists, and it now requires updating and further planning. Okay, that makes sense. So my question would be, so who, who did the plan that currently exists? When was that done? Um, how was it done? And, you know, and, and also I had, I had questions about, you know, the cost of the, um, the ten-year contract. We, I mean, I certainly have no idea what, um, kind of costs would be associated with this ongoing ten-year contract, so, um, I do have a question about that. So I, you know, I, I guess I would like a little bit more information. Um, and, you know, would appreciate if the Chairperson of Finance would, you know, consider giving us further time, just to, you know, get some information from the DPW and get a little bit more detail on, you know, current practices and how the existing plan has been developed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. I think Counselor Frida wanted to weigh in again.
Uh, no, I, that's, that's pretty much where I was going, is, uh, you know, the, the, uh, purchasing agent does mention that it's a new contract. Um, but it's not the first time the city's hired a consultant. How long were they hired for the last time? And, you know, what, as the, the outlodge counselor said, what was accomplished during that, and what's the difference in price for five years for ten years? I mean, ten years is a long time for anything. Um, and, you know, it's, it's not saying anything derogatory. You don't need to have ten years for a forestry plan. I mean, it's, it's not, I mean, if that's not, that's not a good sale, to say you need, you need ten years to do it right. I mean, we, we know what needs to be done there, and the, and the forestry department i- is going to be directing it. So I, I, I think there, there's a lot more information that we should have before you enter into a ten-year contract.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Angelini?
With all due respect to my, my colleagues, who I certainly appreciate their opinions, um, I don't know if anyone else has hired a consultant forester before, but I, I have. And, uh, generally, what they do, they, they do an overall assessment of your timber lands, and formulate a plan that has to be submitted to the state for approval. And after that, it's just a question of, uh, of selective cutting in certain areas at certain times of the year. So each year, there's, there's a, uh, uh, is, there's a, a scope of work that needs to be done. Some years you do nothing. There may be two or three years where nothing is done, and, uh, but the whole idea is, each time, you know, you have to, you have to renew your plan. Once you file a forestry plan, it's not good forever. So I, I believe, well, when I did it back in the day, when I did it, it was five years you had to file a plan. So, um, I, I, I truly don't understand the, uh, the problem with a ten-year, uh, forestry plan, but, uh, I mean, if, if it would make everybody feel better, get the DPW down here to explain to us why they want a ten-year plan? If that would make my colleagues feel better, I certainly, uh, gain the latitude for that.
Mr. Um, Mr. Mr. President?
Yep.
David Cormier, um, you know, I, listen, I, I certainly can understand and appreciate the, you know, the, the concerns, and I mean, it's only January twelfth. I, I, I would have to assume we have a little bit of time. This one is not, it not have a date on it, and it's new. So it's not like we have an expiring one, and we have to renew. So, I mean, the contract can ever, can, can begin and expire, you know, upon negotiation, so we're not under the, we're not under the gun here, as far as I can read in terms of time. Um, I have no problem requesting further time. Get all the questions to me, and we'll get them all instant. We'll have Mr. Chaplalane on the next call if we need to. I'll, I'll ask the forestry to determine what, whatever anybody's comfortable with, so we can, you know, get some more information about it. I don't have a problem with it. I'm certainly not in a rush. I, I don't think there's any rush on this at all, so.
Let me, uh, let, let me solicit, let me solicit, uh, your committee, Counselor, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Uh, I would agree to further time.
And Counselor Angelini?
I would, but let's, but I would recommend that we get somebody from the forestry department, then, on the call at our next meeting, to, uh, explain to us exactly the thought process that went into requesting a ten-year forestry management plan. So everyone will have a clear understanding of, of, of what they're trying to accomplish.
Okay, uh, you've heard the revised recommendation unanimously of, uh, legal, I'm sorry, of, uh, Finance to grant thirty-one dash twenty-one further time. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, this is Counselor Feckley.
Yes, Counselor Feckley.
Okay, so I was, I was trying to jump in, but I was, you know, glad to listen to, uh, all the other input. Um, I, I want to thank the, uh, Fin, uh, the, um, Finance Committee for, um, considering further time, because I too, um, believe that we need more information on this, especially from the forestry department and the Department of Public Works. I philosophically don't have an issue and kind of understand a ten-year time period, but I think that we're not, you know, we're not in the forest re-management, and it would be important for us to, to hear that, and for the public to hear it as well. And then also, um, if we could get some information on, um, the difference between the cost of a five-year, uh, contract and a ten-year contract.
Hey, anybody else? All those in favor of supporting, uh, further time for thirty-one dash twenty-one, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so thirty-one dash twenty-one is given further time by a vote of nine to zero. And we're going to request Mr. Chaplalane and Mr. and the, someone from the forestry department, uh, be available, uh, the next time this is on our calendar. And if, I, I guess the Chairman of Finance would also entertain any questions from any counselors, uh, specific questions in, in advance of that.
Take a sec, and she'll get them to me. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Uh, moving on to Legal Affairs, uh, and seven, oh, um, Counselor Feckley, you're the first one, is going to have to be yours. I am recused, so I'll let you take that up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, moving on to Legal Affairs, we have seventeen twenty-one that will be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Uh, thank you, Madam, Madam, excuse me, Vice President, seventeen dash twenty-one. Steven Fratichelli of Fratichelli Oil Company, Inc., request to amend flammable liquids license from three hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons to was the, was the five seventy-five gallons, was that the amended version or no? Um, I'm asking you.
I believe the amended version, Mr. Chairman, through the presidency, is five hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. We voted on that amendment. Uh, okay, let me, thank you, thank you, Counselor Cormier. Let me, uh, just reread this. Steven Fratichelli of Fratichelli Oil Company, Inc., request to amend flammable liquids license from three hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons to five hundred and fifteen thousand gallons of flammable liquids at two thirty-nine Litchfield Street. Uh, before I get into the formal recommendation, uh, I just want to do some quick subcommittee work. Um, the proposed conditions, uh, the final condition, uh, number eleven, in order to comport with our discussions, um, I'd like to add this sentence to that. This paragraph shall not apply to emergency situations and shall not apply to Saturday mornings during the months of December, January, and February, when the petitioner will be allowed to have deliveries between hours of eight AM and twelve PM. Um, I believe that's what, uh, our discussions entail. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, are you okay with adding that sentence to Condition eleven?
I am.
And Counselor Cormier, how about yourself?
I am as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, I just, I just want to thank, uh, everybody involved. Uh, this was a long, a long process. Um, but I think we, you know, we arrived at a, at a good result thus far. The recommendation to grant petition seventeen dash twenty-one with those eleven conditions, um, and with Condition eleven being amended, um, as I just read. And I'd ask you to poll my committee, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, um, Mr. Shannon. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr? I agree. Counselor David Cormier?
I do agree.
So you have heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to approve seventeen twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chairman?
Hearing that, oh, yes, Counselor Frida?
That's Counselor Frida, um,
Counselor Frida.
I'm just gonna, I, I don't agree with all the conditions, but it appears that the petitioner is okay with them. Um, so I will support this petition.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frida. Uh, just Counselor David Cormier, did I hear you?
Yes, i- if I may, uh, Madam, um,
Right ahead.
You know, I, I, I did, I support this, you know, to, to move it forward, you know, in a positive way. Um, you know, from subcommittee, and I just want to thank, you know, the chairman and, and the other member of my committee as well, and everybody that, you know, worked on this. It certainly was a lot of work, um, trying to get everything hashed out. Uh, we've been at this for a while now. Um, and, you know, I, I'm very comfortable with, with what we have put in place, um, you know, to, to make this as, as safe as we possibly can, um, considering where it is. Um, you know, and I, I, I will say that, you know, I think that the chances of, of anything happening there, uh, is very slim. You know, I, I think that, you know, the systems that, that, that they use these days, the tanks and the, all the valves and, and, you know, it, it's all state-of-the-art equipment, and, um, you know, it's, it's, I think the chances of something happening are very slim. But I think most of us would say that if we had a choice, we, we would not say that this is the best place in the city of Lemonster we could think of to put, um, a facility like this, you know? Um, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I think most people would agree with that. You know, that there, there are other places in the city of Lemonster that, that this much storage of flammables on a property of this nature would be better suited. Um, and, and I, I do believe that, um, you know, the, I have faith in, in the fire chief and, and what he's gonna, you know, oversee, and, um, if Mr. If Mr. Nicoloro or somebody like him is involved, I, I,
Unmuted.
You know, that, um, that they're gonna do the right thing and, and make sure that all the safety mechanisms are in place. You know, but at the end of the day, I represent a neighborhood. And, you know, the people that I've spoken to, they're not too crazy about increased truck traffic carrying this kind of liquid in and out of the neighborhood constantly. And, um, you know, I, I think they understand the reality that if the city council doesn't approve this, then, you know, it's probably gonna end up in court, and, and it's going in anyway, probably at the end of the day. Um, so I don't want to, I wouldn't want to fool anybody in having them think that if we vote against this, that it's not gonna happen, because it, it's probably not true. But at the end of the day, I, I have to side with the neighborhood. I, I'm the neighborhood guy. If I'm not looking out for the neighborhood, then who is? Um, you know, so I, I, I'm not gonna go on record as supporting that we need to store more gallonage on, on a property, um, of this nature that is so close, uh, to a neighborhood. I, I think it's safe to say that, you know, even though the chances of something happening are very slim, when you have this much storage on one, two and a half or so acre piece of property, and, and that much truck traffic coming in, you take that piece of property, it's a little dot on the map, and you put a one-mile or two-mile circle radius around it, okay? The chances of something happening with this type of product in that, in that area is a lot greater than a lot of other places in the city of Lemonster. And, I mean, I have nothing against Fratichelli Oil. Um, I've never heard one complaint or one problem. Um, I think, once again, I just want to reiterate that I think that everything will be seamless, but again, I'm the neighborhood guy, and people are not too tickled about this being your neighborhood, so unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go on record as voting for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Is there any other discussion?
Madam, Madam Chairman? Counselor Angelini?
Yes, Counselor Angelini, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, you know, I, I put myself in a position on this, uh, petition, um, at the balance the interest of business and business expansion against the safety, uh, of the neighborhood. Um, initially, and throughout this process, I've been asking for some assurances. And, uh, I must say, Mr. Nicoloro has given me some comfort uh, in explaining some of the safety features and the redundancies. Uh, another thing that's a bit uncomfortable as a counselor, I think, is the fact that we're asked to green the license
we're asked to grant the license before construction plans have been submitted, and we have to cast our fate and our, after we make our decision, to others, to shepherd the process, uh, to an end. Um, I am very comfortable, and I have full faith and confidence in Chief Sidlow and the Fire Prevention Bureau, the Lemonster Fire Department, to work with Mr. Nicoloro in assuring that state-of-the-art safety measures are in place, um, throughout the process, and the construction activity is monitored, um, with the help of the consultant, a peer review engineer. Uh, I don't know, any, I don't know, uh, about the licensing of any other facilities in the city. I've been a member of this council for about a year now, so I, I can't say, you know, wh- how those other facilities impact, uh, their neighborhoods, and I'm here to vote tonight on what's before us. So, having weighed all the testimony, um, and taking into consideration, uh, what Counselor Cormier said, you know, folks that may be listening must, must understand that, uh, businesses have rights as well, and if this council were to vote, uh, against this license, uh, it's pretty, uh, safe to say that the applicant would go to Superior Court and perhaps a judge may issue the license without any conditions. So, in light of all those facts, um, I'm going to support the petition this evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Angelini. Is there any other discussion on seventeen twenty-one?
Uh, Madam Chairman, Counselor Ardinger?
Yes, Counselor Ardinger, go right ahead.
You know, when this was first given up before the council, I think I mentioned this before, is I said, no way is this ever gonna happen, but after a long and brief, believe me, arduous process, uh, I think we've come to a, a, a situation where, uh, we pretty much need to, uh, grant this petition. Uh, as has been mentioned, it would probably go to court if we don't, and Mr. Fratichelli and his team have presented every possible, you know, safety, uh, or answered every possible safety concern that I would ever have, and I think that the risk of something happening in this is probably small, maybe even so small, where you don't have to worry about it, but it's always a concern, and I would certainly, at this point, have to say, I, I've changed my mind and will support this petition. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Ardinger. Any other discussion on seventeen twenty-one?
Counselor Feckley? No, go ahead.
Yes, who, who, I'm sorry.
This is Counselor Shalafou Zephyr.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. No, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say also that, um, from the beginning, I had lots of concerns across kind of a broad range of issues, and we went back and forth with the petitioner. It's taken a lot of time, it's taken a lot of effort, and, um, a lot of due diligence information, and bringing on the professional, you know, Mr. Nicoloro clearly has, is a, you know, an experienced professional in the propane world, and my sense is that, you know, the Fire Department, at this point, I think, is comfortable with the project, given the conditions that, um, you know, if this does pass tonight, will be attached to the license. So, it's been, you know, it's been a long, kind of arduous and painful process, but, you know, I've come to the conclusion, after all of these public hearings and all the information that's been presented, that I will support it. I think that there are safeguards in place. I think that there are opportunities, um, both, you know, when the plans are drawn, during construction, post-construction, you know, for numerous inspections and an ongoing, uh, relationship between the city, the Fire Department, the emergency management people, you know, and the, uh, the business owner, so, um, for those reasons, I am going to support this tonight. Um, I think, I think that everybody has done their due diligence, and, um, I think as a council, certainly from my perspective, um, I, you know, personally have tried to just really understand, you know, everything that's within our purview and to do the best job that we can in making this decision, so that's why I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on seventeen twenty-one?
Yeah, Counselor Feckley, this is, uh, Counselor Frida.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I, I, I just have to comment. I take a little bit of exception to the Ward Three Counselor's comment that he's the neighborhood guy and he's gonna worry about the neighborhood. I don't think there's one councilor sitting here that hasn't considered neighborhoods, uh, through this whole process. I represented this area for sixteen years. I walked through the whole process with the Fratichelli family when they were moving from Upper Lo- Litchfield Street to the site they're in now. Um, the, the above and beyond that they went through back then, uh, was exceptional to deal with the neighbors, uh, the majority of neighbors and the abutting properties that they now own. Um, they've been exceptional neighbors as far as I'm concerned. I don't think there's ever been an issue. Um, it, it, we're all worried about the neighborhoods, but we didn't have this much concern when we built a brand-new, huge Cumberland Farm in North Lemonster that abut neighborhoods that at that point proved it had environmental issues that weren't recognized until they actually were cited by DEP when they went to put the property up. We supported, um, uh, Cumberland Farm down on Mechanic Street, which is right in the middle of, of neighborhoods all around it. So, I, I think, and sometimes we, we look one way, and then another times we look another way. Um, this is a family that's been around for eighty-four years. I have no, I have no relationship to them. All I do know is that they've been honest. They've been, they came in with a plan with, with, uh, issues that were brought up long before these conditions were even put in. They talked about the qualifications of their drivers, the qualifications of their workers and their employees. We didn't need to tell them in a condition that they need to have qualified, trained people to do this. They already have that in place. They're not gonna ruin an eighty-four-year relationship and business by not dealing the proper way in the community. They're here to stay. Um, so, I, you know, I'm supporting this, but I take a little exception to, you know, to being said, you're gonna vote against it because you represent the neighborhood. We all represent the people in this community, and we're all, I believe, I won't vote, speak for everybody, but I will speak for myself, that, you know, I always take consideration into the people that are gonna be affected by any vote that we, that we make. Thank you.
Counsel, thank you, Counselor Frida. Any other discussion?
If I may, Madam Clerk, I have something else. Uh, Madam, um, Acting President, I have something else to add.
Go ahead, Counselor Cormier.
You know, I, I just want to say that, you know, I'm really getting sick and tired of comparing this facility to other facilities, okay? They don't have above-ground storage at other facilities that were just mentioned. There's a big difference. They don't have underground, they don't have above-ground storage at other facilities. To me, that's a big difference. So, you know, I compare this to other, and, and it's a different product. I believe that, that propane is much more explosive than gasoline.
Yep.
It's a different product, a- and, and I will not be, once again, voting for this permit. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Frida.
I, I will add then, uh, there ought to be some recognition of Paul's Hardware, um, Seven-Eleven, a lot of these areas that you, you'd have a car being able to drive into a propane tank without thinking twice. So, I, there, there are no safe areas, let's face it, and if you want to go apple to apples, you're right. I should have spoken to some of the, the propane tanks that have a, a little fence around them that, that could be a disaster if they were hit. So, yeah, you're right. It, that's not a, that's not a good comparison. Thank you.
And thank you, Counselor Frida. Any other councilors? Any other discussion on seventeen twenty-one? Okay, hearing none. This will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalafou Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Ardinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Nay.
Nay, Counselor Cormier?
That's correct, nay.
And Counselor Bedanza has recused himself, and I will be recorded as nay by a vote of six to two. Seventeen twenty-one has been granted.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Madam Vice President, um, for pitching in there. We'll now move on to, uh, twenty-nine dash twenty-one. Is the Chair, Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Unless there's an objection, uh, I'd like to take twenty-five, twenty-one through twenty-eight, twenty-one and block.
I'm gonna take the position that we've already acted on all of those. I'm not even gonna require that you do that. We, I've actually already, we've already given all, we've already continued all of the public hearings and given them further time.
That's, that's, uh, acceptable to me, Mr. President.
Pretty good. Let's, let's move on to twenty-nine dash twenty-one. Are you ready to report?
I am. Uh, petition twenty-nine dash twenty-one. Massapog Road Corporation, Carol Wiscotty Development Corporation, request to accept Massapog Road in Dobson Circle as public ways, along with associated stormwater drainage easement. Um, I don't know if, um, um, John Roseberry is on the line. I, I thought I read somewhere that he would be, but I don't know if he is. No, he's not. Um, there's, there's been a, a lot of work, um, done on this, and I, I certainly appreciate, uh, Wiscotty Development Corporation, uh, stepping up to the plate and doing everything they've done. Um, it appears that we have what's in place, uh, to grant this petition. Um, there, there are a couple of items that, um, I really think we ought to request. Um, one, uh, the DPW had indicated they felt a certain plan should be referenced, um, on the deed, and, uh, I don't think we have all the referrals, and is that correct, uh, Madam Clerk?
That's right, Counselor Dombrowski.
Okay, so, um, I know there's a big push to accept roads, uh, and I, I certainly am in favor of that, uh, but I would like to, um, give this further time and get one more date and make a push to get all those referrals, and also make sure that the deed is, is accurate. Um, so my recommendation at this point would be further time, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalafou Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I, I agree, but if I, I may, as a committee member, I, I have, I have a couple of comments. I can make them now, or I can do it after the, you, when you're ready to take the vote, it's up to you.
All right. Well, the MS recommendation is to give further time. Is there anybody who wants to be heard?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ahead, Counselor Cormier.
Okay, i- if I may, um, you know, I, I understand, I, I totally understand that we have to get the recommendations and, you know, w- we don't just, we don't just pass this and it, it's magic, the deed is, you know, all of a sudden accepted. I, I get it, so I, you know, but I, I just want to say a couple of things publicly that, um, a- and, and, and I, I apologize to the Ward One Counselor, you know, I, I hope she doesn't feel like I'm stepping on her toes in any way, shape, or form, but I, I, you know, I happen to be very close with a couple of, a few people that live up there, and I see them all the time, so I hear about this all the time. Um, but, you know, there, there is a sense of urgency, and I just want to let those involved know, um, the sense of urgency for us to get this taken care of as soon as possible, from the DPW to the city's attorney, who's gonna end up reviewing this and, and recording this deed, okay? Just eight days ago, on January fourth, someone from that neighborhood messaged me and said that a trash truck slid all the way down Massapog Road sideways, okay? Now, I think we all know how big a trash truck is and the damage it could do. If it hit a vehicle, one that was in the vehicle, a pedestrian, if, if it, you know, flipped over, um, you know, I, I don't know who's in charge of those roads up there at this time, if it's still a developer, or if the city is playing roles, but, but we need some clarity, and clarity comes by the city taking rightful possession of the streets. That's what's supposed to happen. So, there is a sense of urgency, um, so that the city can go in there and properly treat the roads and take responsibility for them. And also, I would ask that, prior to us voting on this, I would like confirmation from Copman and Page that they have reviewed these documents, what has been drawn up, and there's a lot of legal jargon here, and I want to make sure that they're in a position to say, we've reviewed it, and they can go and record this with the registry of deeds, like, within, let's say, forty-eight to seventy-two hours of our vote. And the reason why I say that is because of the sense of urgency that I just explained, not to mention the fact that everyone knows one of my pet peeves is these unaccepted streets with, which have been a nightmare. We voted, I don't know how long ago, months ago, if not close to a year now or more, for some streets in Ward Three, and all the legal work has been done by the developer, but supposedly they're waiting for the city's attorney, and i- it's just fallen into the abyss. And we all know what happens if nobody keeps up with this. It just gets pushed to the back, and, you know, five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now, all of a sudden, you know, we have this situation where the City Council voted to accept it, but it never got recorded, okay? This all needs to stop. So, I want confirmation that, and, and this can remain on our agenda at every meeting, and I will further time this for however long it takes, until we get confirmation from Copman and Page that they reviewed it all, it's ready to go, and when I vote on it, it's gonna be recorded, like, within days of my vote, because I'm sick and tired of this stuff falling into the abyss. So, we need all our ducks in a row, and everybody that's involved needs to understand the urgency. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of further time, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, twenty-nine dash twenty-one has been given further time. Moving on to Ways and Means, um, Counselor, um, Feckley, why don't you read and block all of the, uh, interviewees who did not, uh, appear this evening, and then we'll, um, move to give all of those, um, confirmations further time?
Okay, will do. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Christine Laserta to the position of the cultural commission term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Brian Harper to the position of the Office of Emergency Management Volunteer. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Joseph Kenny to the position of the Office of Emergency Management Volunteer. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Joseph Carlino to the position of the Office of Emergency Management Volunteer. Mr. President, um, we had invited these individuals to our meeting this evening, um, and we were not able to interview them, so I would ask the, uh, city clerk if she could reach out to them again and invite them to the next regular meeting.
Okay, I'll check, I'll check quickly with your committee. Counselor Frida?
Yes, further time.
You okay with further time?
Absolutely, yep. Absolutely, yep.
And Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
Okay, you've heard the MS recommendation to give all of the aforementioned appointments further time, and for the clerk to set up interviews. All those in favor of giving all of those proposed confirmations further time, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, Christine Laserta, Brian Harper, Joseph Kenny, and Joseph Carlino have all been given further time. We'll now take up Caitlin Montagna. Madam Chairwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Caitlin Montagna to the position of cultural commission term to expire 4/15/2024. We did interview Ms. Montagna. She has experience serving on a cultural commission in the city of Revere. She is very interested in continuing on with community work, and she also has experience with grants. I thought that that information obviously made her a very good fit for the cultural commission. I think that they will be very lucky to have her as a new member, and I would like to approve her confirmation, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counsel Afrida?
I agree.
And Counsel Dombrowski?
I also agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the, to confirm the appointment of Caitlin Montagna to the position of cultural commission. Any further discussion? This will be by roll call vote. Counsel Afrida?
Aye.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Aye.
I shall be recorded as aye by a vote of nine to zero. The confirmation of Caitlin Montagna to the cultural commission is confirmed. Moving on to the appointment of Alex Ostroff to the position of emergency management volunteer. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am ready to report. We also interviewed Alex Ostroff this evening. Alex is employed as a security guard at a local security company. He is a graduate of Dean College. He's very interested in volunteerism. He has worked in many, many different forums, one of which being working with the truck poles for service dogs, which he does quite a bit of organizing for. He's interested in joining the EMT unit, and I found him to be very interested in helping out at the Office of Emergency Management. He's a wonderful candidate for that position, and I would like to approve his confirmation, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counsel Afrida?
I agree with the chair.
And Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation to confirm the appointment of Alex Ostroff to the position of office emergency management volunteer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call vote. Counsel Afrida?
Aye.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Aye.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Aye.
And I shall be recorded as aye by a vote of nine to zero. The appointment of Alex Ostroff to the Office of Emergency Management Volunteer is confirmed. There is no new business. Moving on to old business, we have the second reading of an ordinance. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to proceed?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, petition 22-21. Mark C. Badanza, Ward Four Counselor, and David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, request to amend section 2-14 of Article III of the revised City of Lemnster as follows, by deleting, quote, "All meetings of the council shall be held in the municipal building. In the event of a public emergency or other condition which renders it impossible for the council to hold any meeting in the city hall, the council will hold a meeting at Lemnster High School," end quote, and substituting in its place the following language therein, quote, "All meetings of the council shall be held in the municipal building. In the event of a public emergency or other condition which renders it impossible for the council to hold any meetings in the city hall, the council shall be permitted to conduct its meetings at the Emergency Management Operations Center for Lemnster High School," end quote. Mr. President, my recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counsel Schalfo-Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counsel David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the second reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Afrida?
I have a comment.
Yes, please proceed.
I do agree with this petition, and I would like the comments of the city solicitor also entered in, because I think his comment and his opinion was exactly what I brought up when this first came to light. I could read it if you'd like, or...
Your call, Counselor.
All right. Ms. Huffman, I've enclosed an original ordinance from regarding the above-referenced petition. I approve the ordinance as the legal form. This change would add the Emergency Manager and Operations Center of the high school as potential meeting places for the city council in the event that using city hall is not possible, power outage, for an example. While I approve the form of this amendment, the council should keep in mind that pursuant to the open meeting law, any meeting of a public body is required to not only be in a space that is large enough for all interested parties to attend and observe the proceeding, but also the location must be accessible under the American with Disability Act. I expect that is not an issue with the high school, but this should be considered for the operations center. While most council proceedings may still be conducted remotely, this is not an issue. But hopefully, at some point in 2021, the governor's state of emergency will be lifted, and then all meetings will once again be required to allow in-person attendance. So I just think that I was uncomfortable with not being clear at what kind of an emergency would bring us to emergency management, and I think he clarifies it with the example of the power outage. So if we could have that attached to this, that would be, I would feel much better.
It is, every opinion of the city solicitor's office is a matter of public record on file with the city clerk's office, and that's what it will be.
Okay. I understand that. I just wanted it referred to.
Well, you referred to it.
Okay.
Is there anything further?
Nope, that's good.
Okay. Any other counsel? Okay, this will be by roll call. Counsel Afrida?
Aye.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Schalfo-Zephyr?
Aye.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Aye.
And I shall be recorded as aye by a vote of nine to zero. The second reading of the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to community calendar, does anybody have anything under that? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Counsel Angelini, second. Counsel David Cormier made the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, all. Have a wonderful evening and a great rest of your week.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.